All right, oh, all right. Good evening. It's 5:32. Let us begin. Please help me welcome our very special speaker for the pledge of allegiance today. Her name is Avery Grace Fennell. She is the daughter of Taylor and Ariana Fennell, and granddaughter to board member Felicia Alexander, and former San Bernardino City Councilman Damon Alexander, and proud grandparents Cynthia and Robert Hope. Please come to the dice and stand.
Please stand and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was pretty good, young lady. Very good.
Great job, Avery.
Okay, brings us to 1.3 approval of agenda. Do I have a motion second? Okay, let's vote. All right, let's continue.
Not yet, please.
Ms. Cunningham, I think I might be on the wrong page because I'm not getting a prompt. But I, oh, sorry, because it's next to me.
All right. Can we continue? All right, that brings us to 2.1, receive public comments. Okay, and this one? Okay, we call
You want to, excuse me, this point already, you want to read the preamble.
Preamble. Okay, this one right here, okay. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per session. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public hearing. And that brings us to Mr. Ben Pratt slash Jesse Lopez.
Good evening, everybody, how you doing? It's great to see all of you again. It's been a while, man. It seems like February was a long time ago, but I'm really happy to be here. And the purpose of my visit today is I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update to the outreach that the IBW is doing in the district. Right now, we currently are still running our pre-apprenticeship program. We just had a cohort graduation at San Bernardino High School. It was awesome. And we're just waiting on some of the CWA projects to start so that we can really start putting these guys to work. We've been attending career fairs. We've been to Pacific High School, San Bernardino Valley College, and we're about to do that again for back to school. We've been to Arroyo Valley and Cajon High School. And basically, just wherever we're being called, we're answering the call. And we really enjoy the interaction with the district. You guys have been awesome. And we've been keeping in touch with Mr. Pace over at facilities. And we're just waiting for marching orders to get to building some things around here. We're really looking forward to it. I won't take up too much of your time this evening. I'm really excited because today I brought Mr. Lopez with me. And this is what it's all about. He is our first graduate from the San Bernardino High School pre-apprenticeship program that is actually starting our program in the fall. And I don't want to steal any of his thunder, so I will let him introduce himself and go from here. So good to see all of you again. Thanks, thanks so much.
Good afternoon, everybody, board of members, boards of members. My name is Jesse Lopez, as you mentioned. I did their program. Fifteen weeks, one day out of the week. It was great. San Bernardino, I went to San Bernardino for two years, high school. And Mr., I can't remember his name, but well, our student resource person at San Bernardino High, he came up to me with an opportunity to take this class, this course, after school. And I was willing to take it. I have generations of electricians in my family as well. My father is, my father, my grandfather, so I follow in their steps. I've been on the job for now for two and a half months. I've learned many, many skills, how to work as a group, basic trade skills. Learned how to use power tools to even going as deep as bending pipe. Most apprentices don't really get to see that, starting out. But I've got to see a really wide variety of skill trades. It's been a great opportunity that I've had. I had no hassle in transitioning from high school to the apprenticeship. I was able to walk into the school at all times and speak to the director of the school. He was able to answer all my questions at any time. It's been no hassle at all. It's been really great working with IBW.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Congratulations. So where do you actually take your class? You're in class right now?
I will start class in the fall. I will have a pre-math class. It's just, it's going to be mandatory for all new apprentices. It's just a quick math refresher before we actually head into the fall.
And where is that at?
At the school.
At San Bernardino High School?
No, this will be at the IEET.
Okay, they have a school.
Yes, sir.
And what's your ultimate goal? You want to be electrician instead, like you're?
Yes, sir. Five years is the apprenticeship. After that, pass my state certification, become an inside journeyman, wireman with IBW.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr., thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And Jesse, good to see you. I think you're the gentleman we met at San Bernardino High School. And I remember you telling me your story of, I thought at the time, being a second generation electrician. But we just found out you're a third generation electrician. Is that Dad in the back back there?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say congratulations to Dad as well. And thank you for all the amazing work that you guys do. Three generations of electricians. And Mr. Pratt, this is exactly what we're looking for for our kids. So I'm gonna call you back up and call you out right now because I did this at the last board meeting when we had our CTE presentation. And now I challenge you to have more young men and young ladies into apprenticeship program. That's something that we're very proud of, thanks to CWA now. You just mentioned that earlier. And we want to see more stories like Jesse. We do. This is what we're all for, college and career, right? And he's definitely on his way to an amazing career already. Congratulations, Jesse.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Very, very good. Made us meaningful. That brings us to 3.1. We got one more. Oh, I apologize. Okay, Mr. Ryan O'Neal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for your time. My name is Ryan O'Neal. And forgive me, too, I'm super nervous if you can't tell. My name is Ryan O'Neal, and I'm the account manager for the SoCal Ren Kits for Kids program. It's a no-cost, hands-free
I didn't catch that. Can you say the organization's name again?
Well, my name is Ryan O'Neal, and I'm the account manager for the SoCal Ren Kits for Kids program. No-cost, hands-on energy education initiative for third and fourth grade students. I'm here tonight to invite San Bernardino City Unified to join other participating districts like Riverside Unified, Rialto Unified, and Fontana Unified in bringing this impactful program to your classrooms. How it works? Teachers deliver a short, engaging lesson on energy efficiency. We provide a full lesson plan, PowerPoint slides, and activity sheet. But the program is really flexible. So teachers are welcome to use their own materials if they prefer. After the lesson, students receive a free kit with items like LED light bulbs, faucet aerators, and shower timers. In the classroom, students complete a fun online scavenger hunt that teaches about each item in the kit they receive with fun facts and colorful animations. Students then take the kids home and install the items with their families. They don't have to install everything, just what they can. 165% of the students return the proof of installation card, which is a really simple proof of installation card. All it asks for is three things, which items you installed, your home type, if it's a house or apartment, and then your water heating, if it's gas or electric. 165% of the students return their proof of installation cards. The classroom's eligible for a $1,000 grant, and that is for each classroom participating. This spring, we awarded over $100,000 in grants and have capacity for at least 150 more classrooms for the fall of 2025. As the account manager, I personally support your district from start to finish to ensure a smooth, flexible, and impactful experience for your teachers, students, and families. We love to partner with San Bernardino City USD to empower students, support educators, and purport sustainability across your community. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to student success.
Question for you?
Mr. Tillman?
Yeah.
So you said that the, do the classes get the grant when they have 100% participation?
It's 65%. And all they have to do is return this card right here. It's really straightforward. No personal identifiable information, no names, no addresses, just what they installed, their home type, and their water heating.
Oh, 65% of the class does that, then they get the award.
Then the $1,000 grant will be awarded.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Just for additional clarification in terms of once the students fulfill the requirements within their classroom, do you, is there a person in your organization that's assigned to a specific school? Or how does that work?
Can you ask that question one more time?
How do, how, how do you monitor the progress with the school? Like, is it?
So what we look for in a district is someone to support us in coordination. Like, where are we gonna, who, where are we gonna ship the kids to? How, what is the classroom size? Our bandwidth and our size of a team? It's not, we don't have the capacity to do that on our own. So the reason why I came out today is ask for assistance. And, you know, we have, we honestly have like $150,000 worth to give to schools. And I'm not gonna lie, it's really hard to find schools that don't want to participate. And we have, last year, we did 300 classrooms with $280,000 of grants we gave out. And it's completely cost-free. And I monetize everything. I'm the account manager. We're having another account manager. And we work diligently and really hard to be flexible with school schedules.
Mr. Tillman?
For the viewers and the audience and those on TV that says that the Southern California Regional Energy Network is administered by the County of Los Angeles and funded by California Utilities Taxpayers under the auspices of the California Public Utilities Commission. Just in case parents and the public are wondering where the money comes from.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, that's great.
Thank you so much.
Okay, get the word out. Okay, moving on to 3.1. This is the time that members of the public are provided an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under the closed session agenda item. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Do we, do we have anyone like that?
No, we don't.
All right. All right, thinking, seeing none, we return to 4.1. And okay, we return to 3.1, closed session, public comments. No, 3.2, thank you. All right. As provided by law, the board will adjourn to closed session for consideration of the following. Public employee appointment/employment, Government Code Section 54957, Title Interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. That's it? Closed session. Meeting back to order, please. Okay, that brings us to 4.1. If necessary, any additional items listed on the closed session agenda and which require a board vote will either be read out orally if a vote was taken in closed session or a vote taken at this time. There were no additional items. The interim assistant superintendent of human resources will be voted on under action items. Okay, we move on to 5.1.
Administrative reports and presentations. We are extremely excited to share the wonderful things that are happening in our district. I'm so proud of the work that these two particular directors and principals are doing. Not only do we serve in a district of K-12, but we actually serve the entire community from birth all the way till 101. And so we're very excited to be able to share with you today some of the wonderful things that are happening in our community. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce to you our wonderful principal at the Inland Career Education Center, Mr. Raul Pedraza.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Ariano, Cabinet members, and San Bernardino City Unified School District families and community. Again, my name is Raul Pedraza, principal at the Inland Career Education Center. And I'm truly happy to be in front of you today to share the work in which we engage in in an effort to provide as many opportunities to our students, but also to do our part in impacting our community. As with any good organization that's truly trying to make impact on the community, it is imperative that we have a clear objective, that we understand what we want to do and how it is that we're gonna get there. For us, this is driven through our mission and our vision. Here we see that the Inland Career Education Center empowers and inspires individuals through education to contribute to the economic growth of our community. And our mission indicates that we provide a bridge to post-secondary education as well as to the workforce through the delivery of quality education and student services. So again, our goal is to impact our community and to have those individuals that come to us go out and impact their community, right? So the way that we do this is through our different departments and services that we offer. Our first department is our academic department. And through this department, we offer high school diploma preparation, GED preparation. And for those individuals that want to pursue their high school diploma or their GED but are not necessarily ready, we don't turn them away. We have our pre-GED program that prepares them enough to go into the, into the GED and the high school diploma courses with basic skills for them to succeed. So we don't like to just put them in there, right? In our next department, we have our Career Technical Education Department. And here we offer courses in certified nursing assistant and vocational nursing, barbering apprentice, meat-cutting apprentice, as well as digital literacy training. And last but not least is our ESL and citizenship department. Here we offer courses in English as a Second Language, citizenship preparation, and community-based English tutoring, which essentially is ESL courses paired with parenting embedded in our community, specifically in our K-12 sites. So again, we feel that our work is very important because of the city where we reside in, right? There's a lot of poverty. And based on the San Bernardino County Community Indicators Report of 2019, we saw that for a household in which the individual that was leading that household did not have a high school diploma, their rate of poverty is at 23.4%. But we also know that by us preparing them to pass their GED or to successfully complete their high school diploma, that rate drops down significantly, down to 15.7%. So that is our goal, right? As they're coming to us and they're aspiring to complete these programs, even though it's high school and it's GED, it is rigorous. But in order for them to be successful, it's important that our team understands their need, meets that need, and provides the support and scaffolding for them to be successful. And one other number that I want to look at here or point out would be the number of those, of that household in which that individual goes and gets some college or acquires an AA. We have a partnership with Valley College where our students are able to take classes concurrently while completing their high school diploma or GED. So our students are going to class at both places. But some of those students don't necessarily take advantage of that opportunity because they don't know yet. The beautiful part is that we have Valley College councils on our campus. And when they are ready to transfer, once completed, we do the entire matriculation process in partnership with Valley at our site. So again, that moves us lower and lower, lowering that rate of poverty more and more as more services that we provide there and partnerships that we engage in. The other piece that we wanted to share here is with our citizenship program, right? Again, based on the Immigration Policy Institute Naturalization Trends, we see that for an immigrant which is naturalized, they earn on average eight to 11% more than their non-citizen counterparts. Again, imperative, right? We want them to be working. We want them to have better opportunities for better employment. And that provides that opportunity. But even within homeownership, again, back in our city, taking into consideration our situation here, even the citizenship boosts homeownership rates and financial stability for our students. Again, through the acquisition of citizenship, different opportunities become available that better position them to take advantage of those opportunities. But how does Inland Career Education Center impact these particular numbers, right? So on, on an average, from year to year, we are at about 80 students of ours receiving their citizenship while they're with us, right? That's immense. We help them preparing for the questions, for the interview, and we partner with Catholic charities to help them with the legal process if needed. But again, that's what Inland Career Education Center does. And again, here is our last department. And I chose two fields to kind of focus on today, not every field. But the first one is our CNA program. Our CNA program is a 12-week course that prepares students for the state boards. So for an individual that invests 12 weeks of their time, successfully passes the state boards, their median salary is $43,410. And it's imperative that we compare that number to the average minimum wage in our area, which is at about $34,000 for a full-time employed individual. So again, it's for 12 weeks of studying, of rigor, it's about a $9,000 difference from the very, from the minimum wage to that next level. For those that are pursuing, for some of our CNA students that are pursuing further education, we have the opportunity for them to continue with their LVM program. For those individuals, we see that the salaries are much higher here. It's about $20,000 higher than the minimum wage in our area. So for us, our goal is to make sure that whatever, here we have two examples of CTE courses or programs, but that whatever program that we offer that is high wage and that it is assuring in-demand opportunities. We want to make sure that when people invest time with us, that there's gonna be a job there, that it pays well, and that the longitude for that job is high.
Mr. Tillman, did you have a comment?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
So for the CNA and the LVM classes, do we have waiting lists?
Currently, we do. We accept, in our CNA class, it's about 15 students that we accept. And every year, we do have waiting lists for that. During the summer, we have a very particular partnership with our K-12 partners where that class of 15 students is composed, it's composed of students that are in our medical pathways in our K-12 sites. So currently, we have a partnership with Pacific High School, Sierra High School, and San Andreas High School as well. So for, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, finish. I'm still, I'm still
And then for LVM, sorry. And then for LVM, we do have an immense program. So for that one, we only accept about 22 students per class. That's every 18 months, right? The number of people that actually come to us, test, right, and try to interview, it's about 75 students.
Is there a reason why we can't expand it?
Currently, we are limited, one by staff, right? But the other one is that for both of these programs, we need clinical sites. So for us, as an adult school, we're competing with other schools, other adult schools, other for-profit colleges as well that are at these sites. So we almost, that's, that's the biggest burden that we have to trying to get into a place where there's room for clinical opportunities for our students. But we are engaging with different providers in the area, and we're trying to broaden that as well to try to offer that opportunity. But once that gets settled, we need, we need more staff, and we'll work on that as well.
You know, because I'm all for making sure that our students get first priority. But you do have a lot of community folks also
Yeah.
that want to get into the program.
Most definitely.
And the history of, I know you guys call it Inland Career Education Center, but the history of adult education has been to offer the opportunity to people in the community also. So I hope we don't lose sight of the adults that still want access to the center.
I love that you said that. And I wanted to say that for every, every one of our programs, we have a minimum, a minimum requirement that must be met. And we do not waver from that. But we make sure that the next consideration is that they are community members. That, that is imperative to what we do.
Dr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My question is, we have a waiting list. So anytime I hear waiting list, what can we do to eliminate that waiting list and create even more opportunities for our students?
Again, one part of that would be to make sure that we have additional clinical partners where we could go and send another additional class. The other piece would be to look to broaden our staff. Currently, we have, we just got our director of nursing. We waited about a year to hire that position. Now that she's in place, she's gonna be helping us again partner and look outside of the clinics that we're currently with. But she's also looking to see if we could pull somebody from industry because especially in the medical field, it's very difficult to pull somebody from the medical field when we're looking at wages because it is significantly different, the wages of a, of a professional in the medical field compared to a teacher that they would have to go down to. Yep.
This might be a technical question. But how is this similar or different than our program at Pacific High School? Or I think, do we still have a partnership with Gateway College as well? The San Manuel?
I'm not sure of the Gateway College.
That's the one by the stadium?
Yeah, the one by San Manuel. I'm not sure whether we, we, Adult Ed doesn't have a partnership with them right now.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the, what was the first question? I'm sorry.
Is it similar to like to the program at Pacific or is that a different?
It is similar. The only thing, and this is why the partnership, the summer bridge happened. There's a lot of clinics that do not allow any student that is not 18 years of age or older to actually go because of, you know, insurance and liability purposes. So for those students, when they come to us, they've already done their program there. So they'll still review some of that material. But when they're going, they're going to practice, and they're getting that opportunity that they didn't get, not because they didn't want to, but because it was restricted from them because of the age limit.
They have to be 18 then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Learn something new, thank you.
One thing with the 18 years of age, there's a new definition in the state of California for an adult to acquire adult school. That would be anybody 18 years of age or older or an individual that's already completed their high school diploma. So they could be a 16-year-old, 17-year-old, as long as they finish their Uh so they could be a sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old, as long as they finish their high school diploma, they would be considered an adult now. That's a recent change.
I just have a quick question. Uh when you talk about your um because you need sites and they can they can do their clinicals. Are you talking about uh hospital settings such as, you know, uh San Bernardino medical community and all of these different hospitals? Is that what you mean or?
Yes, ma'am. So we are at two different types of sites. So we're at the VA Hospital, which we're very fortunate to be at. Uh and we're also at a law at long-term uh elder care facilities as well. Yeah, those are the two that we're looking at with reference to clinical sites.
Okay, and Mister Santos?
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions. What is the success rate of the students passing the California exams? And do they pay for them themselves or do does the program assist them with with that?
Good, with reference to our CNA program, that one, the state board is composed of uh two two sections, right? So that would be um their hands-on training, right? And then also the theoretical. So for our students, this year we were at about eighty-five percent. Uh but when we're looking, and that was the first time that they're that they're taking it. Once a student does not pass that, we do have a remediation plan for them. They're coming in, taking additional courses. We're looking at the competencies that they might have missed and kind of try to remediate and support in that area. Yeah, for the VN program, that one, our rate of those that are recommended to take the test. Because for VN, in order for them to challenge the NCLEX, they must meet a certain score that's set by the board. So once they meet that score, those that are taking the class, I mean, those that are taking and challenging the test, they're passing at about ninety percent rate. Um and again, we have a remediation plan, but a lot of those students. Um we try to make sure that we're building them because we know the competencies that they have. There's built-in competency tests that they're taking throughout their time there. So we're trying to build that and remediate it even before they're taking the test.
Mister Tillman?
Think he had another part of the question about cost. So they what I just know because I know somebody that is going to the program. But doesn't it cost like seven hundred dollars for the CNA program?
That is correct. CNA is seven hundred. Our VN program is fifty-three hundred uh of tuition. Yeah.
And can uh will Pell Grant, are they eligible to use money for the Pell Grant to pay for it?
Currently, we cannot. So currently, uh we are trying, we are actually um. We're trying to get accreditation to the Council of Occupational Education. That is a federal accreditation that would, once completed. It'll allow us to apply for Title IV funding, which would be the Pell Grant, but not at this moment. We're working on that.
So you said the LVM class is five thousand three hundred dollars?
That is correct, sir.
And they pay out of pocket for that?
So the good thing is that we're partnering with different community-based organizations and the county. To provide opportunities for those that are low income, which are the majority of our students. So currently, there's some WEOWA money coming from the county.
You named some letters. What is it?
WEOWA? Sorry.
Yeah, what does that mean?
The workforce uh innovation and opportunity. Uh forgot the last letter. I'm not going to try to guess it. Yeah. Yeah, but it's it's specifically funding to get people back to work. Yes, sir. So then the other.
What percentage of our participants are getting that funding, do you know?
So of the class of twenty-two, this this last class that just entered. Uh sixteen of them actually got funding either through the county or through uh Operation New Hope, which is a third-party support to the county.
Sixteen out of how many?
Sixteen out of twenty-two.
And how long does the program last?
Eighteen months.
So that's not a whole lot of money. They could pay, they can pay monthly?
We we don't have that set up currently. A lot of those students that are trying to get into our program, they kind of know that it's uh we try to publicize the cost as much as possible. And work with the county to make sure that it's out there and publicized. Um a lot of our students paid out of pocket. So so for that.
So they pay fifty-three hundred dollars upfront?
That's correct.
And we can't make it where they can pay monthly?
Currently, we don't have that system set up. We could definitely explore it.
I'm asking, is it possible though?
It is possible. Yes, sir.
I think we should look at that. Because you said it's how many months?
It's eighteen months.
So what's fifty-three hundred divided by eighteen?
Out of math, man.
That's three hundred dollars a month. That's a whole lot better than paying fifty-three hundred upfront.
Yeah, so so just to tell you, the the individuals that really truly need it based on income. They get with the county and they get fully funded or they get with the community-based organization and get fully funded.
You saying the four that don't got plenty of money?
What's that?
The four that.
I I that would be the assumption based on criteria, but but again, like you said, if it's going to impede somebody from coming to our class that's from our community. We should definitely explore that.
I agree. Hundred percent.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mister Santos, did you have another part to your question that I I talked over?
Oh, he answered it. It was the it was the uh oh, well, the testing, the cost of the test.
Oh, there we go. So all of the tests, uh the first test, it's actually part of their tuition. Yeah, so it's embedded into the tuition.
Ms Medina?
I know there's still more slides um to the presentation, but just so far, I do appreciate that you're you're trying to, you're pushing. The the idea of having these students um receive additional opportunities. And so I appreciate that great idea to try to have it um as a monthly payment. Because I know for a fact, had I been in my earlier stages, I would not have afforded it.
Yeah.
Um and monthly payments, even then, it's it's pushing it. But for the students or individuals that are going to set that as priority, at least it's feasible. Versus, you know, paying it upfront. But I'm really glad that the the county and other methods are able to provide support as well. Thank you.
Okay, that it? Please continue if you have any more. Is that that it?
Oh, no, yeah, we'll we'll wrap up soon, right?
Thank you. Keep going.
So again, we have a lot of information that we provided, but we always say that the best voice uh to share what it is that we do is our student voice, right? So here we have one of our students that her story was impactful enough that even GED featured her on a nationwide campaign to promote adult education going back to school. So we'll start this one.
I got my GED um December twenty twenty-three. My motivation for getting my GED was myself. I definitely wanted to do it for my family, but again, I I really needed to do it for myself. I doubted myself. Been coming from my background that I had. I wasn't able to finish school. I definitely wanted this one achievement for myself. The reason I didn't finish high school was because I was the sole caregiver for my siblings. I had parents who. Were both on drugs and. I had a very difficult childhood. During the height of the pandemic, my husband of thirty years became ill. Um it found out he had terminal brain cancer. And I needed to make sure that I was stable, so I returned, decided to return to school and receive my GED. My biggest challenge was math. I doubted myself. I didn't think that I could do this. Um how did I overcome this? I really diligently worked with Aztec Flash and Aztec. Immersing myself into. All the studies that I.
So Ms Isis is a wonderful example of the students that we serve, right? Not everybody's story is the same, but a lot of our students come from different obstacles, different backgrounds. Many things that other people would give up on. But again, she's an example of perseverance, right? She pushes, she didn't give up, she passed her GED. But when you look at her experiences, man, they're tough, right? So when they're coming to ICC, it's imperative that we take that into consideration, right? The need, the social emotional need of the student as well as the academic need that they have. So here, just to tell you a little bit more about Isis, just so you know, she's attending San Bernardino Valley College. She actively participates both at the college and at our site, trying to contribute to her community. Uh she's currently running for the Student Council and her hope is to enhance student engagement and leadership. She's part of MECHA. She is part of the History Club and she's part of the Physics Club. Uh she's pursuing a major in Psychology while at the same time concurrently trying to complete her certificate in Business as she plans to attend. Um she plans to attend Cal State San Bernardino. So the question is why, right? Why does ICE, the Inland Career Education Center and their staff engage in this work on a day-to-day basis, right? We have the firm belief that every diploma earned is a step towards opportunity. We know and understand that every citizen adds a wonderful and strengthens our community. Every healthcare worker brings care and hope to their families. But most importantly, we know and we believe in our heart that every student served is a life transformed. That's why we engage in this work. So again, with any work, we need to make sure that we're showing our outcomes and sharing that publicly with you, right? So in our academic program for our high school graduates, we had seventy-one graduates this year. For our GED, I wish we had six hundred and ninety. It's sixty-nine. Um completers. Uh VN program, we had thirty-four, I mean thirty-five completers. CNA program, sixty-one. Meat cutting, nineteen. Our barber apprentice, twenty-eight. Our ESL program, we had nine hundred and thirty-five students that completed, meaning that they moved or had a measurable gain from one level to the next. And of those that were in the ESL program, one hundred and twelve either transitioned into our high school diploma program. Into our CT program or transitioned over to Valley College. And this year, uh year to date, we have seventy-four new citizens. Some of these numbers go beyond the fiscal year, uh but once they close, you guys should have that information. And lastly, I'd like to share just the number of enrolled students that we had this year. Uh five thousand eighty-nine. When you look at that big number and you look at the outcomes, the reality is that not every student that comes to us leaves with their certificate in hand. We do our best to make sure that they stay, that they persist, that they have the support that it needed, but for some reason or another, life pulls them away. Our hope is, though, when they leave, that they have a better opportunity or a better understanding of themselves. And of the support that the community is providing them. That way, in the moment where life provides an opportunity to come back, they know where to go.
Mister Tillman?
On your other programs, the meat cutting apprenticeship.
Yes, sir.
And the barber shop apprentice, are there waiting lists for those also?
Yes, for so let me correct that. For barbering, there is a waitlist. Uh for that class, we usually take twenty students uh per term. That's a two-year apprentice program. Uh and there every time that we do have applications, there is additional.
How long is the waitlist?
The waitlist, I don't know the exact number, but we do have a waitlist. I don't know the number at the top of my head.
And what's the reason why we can't expand that one?
Uh that one is almost like the clinical sites. Our program works that every student needs to have a barber shop where they're practicing. Uh so if a student doesn't have that or we don't make that available, it's hard to get them there. So right now, the number of partners that we have kind of limit that. And also the number of teachers that we have. We only have two teachers that are part-time. That limits also our opportunity to take on more students.
Cost, what do we charge for the barber shop apprentice?
That one is about twelve hundred dollars a month. I mean, a year, sorry. I mean, for the program, for the entire program, sorry.
And does that pay for the the teacher?
Uh no, uh we get funding from the state to provide these programs. So when we're looking at just the uh just the tuition, it doesn't cover the teachers.
Is there a limit from the state to us?
No, there is not.
So we could expand?
We can. Yeah, we need more staff.
But I guess I'm saying. If you hire two teachers, would the state pay for it?
They they wouldn't give us additional funding. So just from our apprentice program, we get about forty thousand dollars a year for both programs for the outcomes because it's all outcome-based. So we get about forty thousand. So if you take into consideration the cost of the employee of the teacher, it doesn't cover it. So they won't give us any additional uh funds. The additional funds would come if our outcomes, if we had more students that would gain employment, finish the the program and and get the board certified. But e- even when that happens, it wouldn't cover the cost of the teacher.
Well, you know what the cost to per, they're paying twelve hundred. What is the cost to us?
I don't have that number off the top of my head right now.
You know, I say that because uh I hate to be part of an organization that's stymying, you know, the potential for success.
Yes.
And uh I I know about the barber apprenticeship because the barber shop that I used to go, they were they were excited about. Uh being able to go to our program. So and a lot of times, if they don't go in that program. It's not like they go to a different program. It's just their dreams die and they don't become the barber. So if there's something that we can do and maybe Terry, um if we can have a discussion on uh working on all the issues with the finances. Uh and then if not, then you come to the board and say, you know, if we're going to do it, here's what the additional cost would be. And we could do it by a year-by-year, you know, basis, not necessarily uh having a um. Making commitment, ongoing commitment. But I think it's important just to look at it. I mean, you you said the reason for the. The LVM being limited is because you don't have assisted living places and that type of stuff to put the people at. Although I know some assisted living places, they don't have nobody in there. Um they can go to the villas, but uh. But I really think it'd be in uh important to find out if we can expand.
Yes, sir.
Because it I know how how much it affects people's lives. Thank you.
Yes, yes, go ahead, uh Doctor Maurice.
Just Terry, just to make sure I'm correct. Adult education, we we belong to a consortium.
That is correct.
So our funds come as one pot within a consortium of multiple districts, which includes San Bernardino, Rialto, Ucaipa.
Rialto, uh Colton.
Colton and Redlands, right? So the funds are limited and then from that limited amount of money, it's dispersed by the board, which is represented by the different superintendents. Uh of the districts and of course, the larger districts get a larger chunk, right? So there is, there is some truth to. There's a limit to how much money we get every year. So even if we wanted to expand in a given year, more than likely, it would require general fund money. Uh because there's also um it's incentivized too. So if your program does well one year. Then the consortium gets more money the following year based on the success of the entire consortium. So um I think there's a little bit of confusion uh on how you answer some of the question is. Can we expand? Yes, there's a will.
Yeah.
Uh but that doesn't necessarily mean we have the funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So if we had the will and the board gave us direction. Um those additional funds, we would have to find in the general fund or some other funding to support that program. Is that correct, Terry?
Yeah, I I'd have to double check, but I don't believe O one funds, which is our our main district funds, could uh support. Where adult education is in is called Fund Eleven, totally separate funding source. So I'd I'd have to double check um the parameters on how we can spend our general unrestricted funds to make sure that that would be an allowable cost item. But also look at grants and other opportunities to support adult ed.
So here's the part I'm confused about. I thought years ago. They eliminated restrictive funding for um adult ed and we just chose on our own to continue it.
It it is now embodied in one funding source. Fund Eleven is is what adult education is funded from. It is no longer funded out of our O one funds.
Oh, that is a, so you're saying that we get restricted money for, so they brought the program back? Is that what you're saying?
It's limited, it's restricted to the adult education in Fund Eleven.
And it's not based on any type of ADA?
Not that I'm aware of.
And so they fund it based on a percentage or something? There has to be a formula as to how it's funded.
Correct. I I I would have to do a little bit more research on that with the consortium to see how that is divvied up amongst these participating districts.
And in terms of their budget, do they spend all their money every year?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes, they do. Very good.
We're one of the few districts in our consortium that does.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms Alexander? Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Just go. Just jump in.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I would like for you to finish, Mister Pedriza, and then I'll ask my question.
Got it, understood. Yeah, so the next slide was just to thank you once again. Uh the Inland Career Education Center is a place where we believe that opportunities happen. Our community is being changed and our staff is completely dedicated to making sure that, again, just like our K-12 counterparts are working on our kiddos. That their parents, their grandparents, and those that they live with also have same opportunities for us to close that gap within our community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your great presentation. Um I have a few questions. One is really for the public because I'm not sure if it's clear on how a community member can even apply and qualify. For the three different components or pillars that you shared. So how 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 does that happen?
Wonderful. So uh we have all that publicized in our website. So any student that's going into high school diploma, GED or our ESL program, there's minimal requirements there. As long as you have the will to come, that's that's all that it takes. For the purposes of our CNA program, which is our medical program that we shared today, that one doesn't really have a prerequisite other than an entrance exam, so a placement exam. That we're looking at. So that one's what's required there. And then for our VM program, which is our higher-level nursing program, that one, you do need to be a CNA student. And then for our VM program, which is our higher-level nursing program, that one, you do need to be a CNA student prior and successfully got in your board certifications, um, and you need to also take a placement test, and there's an interview that's conducted. So that one's a little bit more extensive. There is one program that we had up here, that although we are the educational provider, it is majorly restricted, and that would be our meat cutting program. That is a program that is in just, uh, in just in collaboration with Stater Brothers, and the only people that are able to pursue that program are Stater Brothers employees that have passed probation and in good standing.
Thank you. And, um, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that, um, in order to qualify, you look at community members. However, now that we have heard that it's a consortium, what does that really mean? As it relates to who is selected on behalf of San Bernardino City and the High School District?
Got it. So even though we belong to a consortia, we all have our independent districts that we're serving. So for us, as we're marketing and trying to provide support to our community, we don't market in their areas, right? So Redlands markets to their area vicinity, Colton does the same. So for us, again, we don't market outside, but if a student that comes from the outside of our city bounds or our district boundaries, we, we accept them. So there is no restriction there. Uh, the consortium model is to assure that funding is being divvied up strategically. Um, and also to make sure that as we're developing new programs, that we're definitely not uh, duplicating programs that might not be needed, and to make sure that we're being efficient with the spending of funds.
Awesome. I think we have some really great programs, and you shared, uh, about many of them. There was one on here under Programs at Bill Futures.
Yes.
And it's digital literacy training. What is that?
That one, we have from very basic keyboarding to introduction to how to use a computer, all the way up to, um, we primarily focus on the Google Suites, because that's a free program that they can access anywhere. Um, but that, that's what it is. It's more of an introduction to the computer first, and then introduction to, um, components that you might need as you're looking at college and the high school program.
So future is actually the present. Um, how about robotics or anything related to just even artificial intelligence? Are you infusing that into this particular program?
Not currently. Uh, we do have, we've been working on how to appropriately, uh, utilize AI and like ChatGPT for the purposes of learning, um, and then that, that being a positive, not a negative. But with reference to robotics or a program specifically on the development or understanding of that, not that broad, no, we don't offer that.
We are in conversation, yeah, we are in conversations with, uh, Google. Um, we're actually meeting with them in the next two weeks to discuss the certifications that come from Google that would be transferable to an employer. So it's not like just the basic keyboarding, but they would actually get something that they would be able then to use to get a job.
Um, that's good to hear. However, um, in addition to that, even with robotics, because if we're having a technical program, robotics is something that's of current, and that would be something to consider and to infuse in our overall curriculum.
I'll look at that.
Thank you.
Ms. Medina?
I was actually looking at your website, at the website, and, um, they even have digital literacy. Um, that's for twenty dollars. Um, and it, 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 it works at different levels when it comes to Microsoft Office, Word, Excel, and PowerPoint and so forth. Um, I wanted to find out, uh, is there even opportunities to do an apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship program similar to what, um, you know, the, uh, one of the public speakers on, um, with IBW? And, and wondering, is that even opportunities? Because at the end of the day, we have a CWA that we want to recruit within our city here, and, and is there an opportunity there? And I maybe, I don't know, now with the funding and how that works, and, you know, is that something that we can do?
So currently, we're restricted on the expansion of any new programs because of the, uh, because our, our, our pursuit of the COE accreditation. So we have a two-year moratorium. So once we have our initial visit, and once we're officially accredited through them, then the moratorium finishes, and we can look and explore to new programs. Um, with reference to that, we've been looking at, and we did conduct some, uh, conversations with some of the local unions about two years ago with reference to what are some things that we could do at the adult school, not necessarily focused on a particular trade, but some of the base things that we could do, like CPR training, some OSHA ten, OSHA thirty training, that provides that student that's gonna apply for the trade might have a better opportunity than getting there. But because of our pursuit of COE, we kind of put that on hold. Um, our accreditation visit is in April. So our hope and our goal and what we know is that we'll be out of that moratorium shortly.
Okay.
Mr. Tillman?
What is your total budget?
Our total budget, we're a little bit shy of ten million dollars. I don't know the exact number.
Is that it? Okay.
So you get, um, so you're saying most of the students don't stay there. It's fifty, five thousand eighty-nine, those students don't stay the whole time?
Yeah, not, not all of them complete a, a certificate or successfully complete the entirety of a program. That's correct.
But wouldn't, you can't, you can't divide a ten million by the, the, to, do you guys have a number for how much the cost you per student to educate them? Any different programs?
We do within the CAPE funding, because we do get, not all of our money is state money. We do get federal money as well. So out of the CAPE, there is a per student cost. I don't have the exact number right now, but I could make sure that I get that to you tomorrow morning.
Ballpark number, just?
Per student? No, no, I, I wouldn't, yeah.
Thank you. When, uh, uh, when you get a, a, a student from the district, that's not eighteen?
That's correct.
Does their ADA follow them?
So currently, we have not taken any student that is under eighteen, even though we have the change to the definition of an adult, we haven't had that experience.
The only students you get are eighteen and older.
That's correct, right now.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Santos?
I just want to say thank you for the great work.
Well, thank you guys for your support. Appreciate you.
That concludes our presentation for the Inland Career Education Center. I'd like to thank Mr. Pedrassa for his hard work. We didn't come to ask for money. We came just to be able to highlight the wonderful things that are happening for our adult learners in this community. So thank you very much for your hard work. Your team is doing, is doing miracles with the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I, I have one more little comment. Uh, what's the next graduation, uh, day and for whom?
I left my phone over here, but over, uh, it's, uh, I believe it's mid-July, and it's gonna be for our CNA class. That would be the class that's K-12 students that had just graduated, and that are now gonna be, uh, certified nursing assistants.
I believe I'm, I'm, I'm going.
You should all be receiving an invitation for that. Yes, ma'am.
How many, how many employees do you have?
I don't know the number, uh, the number off the top of my head.
A lot. A lot. Muchos.
Get that for us, it'd be great.
Thanks, sir. Yep, I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Okay, moving on, uh, very good. Five point two, Child Development Program Presentation?
Well, again, there's so many wonderful things that are happening right here in San Bernardino. And so we, like I said earlier, we serve every facet of this community, including our youngest learners, um, who we get sometimes within weeks of their birth. We get newborns in there at night. This is a, my happy place. And so today, we are going to give you information about our Child Development Program. With us today, we have our director, Dr. Latasha Kelly, and our wonderful coordinator that's with her, Nancy Correo, who are just been wonderful ambassadors for this program. We're so proud to be able to offer this to our community. And so with that being said, we are going to pass it to Dr. Kelly.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. So glad to be here this evening. Tonight, we're gonna give you a little overview of an insight of our Child Development Program. Because as you know, we serve the tiniest children of our district, and just to let you know, we were born in nineteen seventy-three at the All Philip Allred Child Development Center on K Street. So if you haven't visited, we would like you to visit one day. Next slide, please. So as you see, we have seven infant classrooms. By the way, we serve children from birth to five. We have eight toddler classes. We have eighteen full-day preschool classrooms, and sixty-six part-day preschool classrooms, totaling ninety-nine classrooms. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. Uh, really excited to share our program with you. So currently, we have about two hundred and five, uh, maybe plus or minus, um, as we're continuing to hire employees. Of those employees, sixty-six of them are certificated teachers, and what our program really likes to brag about is our teachers are all highly educated. They have degrees, uh, doctorate degrees, master's degrees, bachelor's degrees, and, um, and that is including our teachers and our six, uh, program specialists. So, um, we offer a lot in our classrooms in early childhood education. Um, we have eighty-three classified instructional aides, thirty-six recreational aides, and fourteen classified, uh, office staff. Next slide, please.
So our full-day infant toddler and our full-day preschool runs two hundred and forty-six days each year, and our part-day runs a hundred and eighty days each year. Our full-day infant toddler are mostly on high school campuses, and our part-day preschools are on mostly elementary school campuses. And we're, right now, we're totaling about forty-five preschool sites and infant toddler, including infant toddler. Next slide, please.
So our enrollment data. So currently, our enrollment for our infant toddlers is forty-eight infants. Our full capacity, if we had the staff to cover that, would be ninety-six, uh, infants, which would mean we need approximately forty-eight more infants, which we do have them. As you can see on the waitlist, we have a hundred and three. However, we don't have the staff to provide those services for our infants. Ninety-six toddlers is what we currently have enrolled, and if we would be at full capacity, that would be a hundred and two toddlers. Um, and currently, we have fifty-eight on the waitlist. That is our biggest, um, struggle right now, is we have a lot of toddlers between the ages of eighteen and thirty-six months that want to get into our program. Um, we also have three-to-five-year-olds. We have thirteen hundred and forty-six preschoolers. And with, if we were at full capacity, it would be two thousand and eight. Uh, we currently have five hundred and thirty-nine students on the waitlist for that as well. Um, and we are actually at the fourteen percent mark for our African-American student enrollment. Um, Dr. Rodriguez has also created a tuition-based program for us, which, uh, supports our district student, our district, um, employees. And we have approximately thirty-five, uh, of those students in our program, which we, um, do a, for a full-time infant toddler, would be about three hundred and sixty dollars a month, saving them about seventeen hundred dollars a month. So we do have our, uh, um, principals, vice principals, teaching staff, recreational staff, clerical staff, all enrolled into our Child Development Program as well. Next slide, please.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Ask a question on that slide. So you mentioned, uh, the waitlist, and you mentioned the need for teachers. Is, you can't hire teachers because you don't have the funding, or you can't hire teachers because you can't find the teachers?
The funding. It's definitely the funding and the space. So we, if we were at full capacity, we would probably need a cup, a few more classrooms, correct?
Yes, a few more classrooms and a lot more.
I'm more, I can't hear you. Can you go to the microphone? A lot more, what?
Yes, we would need more teachers. We would need more instructional aides, recreational aides, and a few more facilities.
So just, uh, Mr. Cal, I don't mean to cut you off, but in terms of the funding, so it's not based on ADA funding? We get a limited amount of funding for this program?
It is ADA, it's not based on ADA funding, no.
We max out what we get?
Yeah, we, oh, definitely max out what we get.
Yes.
So right now, we don't have the funding to hire more teachers?
That is correct. What I'll do, uh, Mr. Tillman, is I'll go and, and meet with Dr. Kelly and get the, more of the specifics and cost that out, and then I can share that with the board.
Oh, is this, um, money funded through a special program? Is restricted dollars that we get from the state?
Eight, yeah, state restricted funding, yes.
And, and, and the formula is based on district size or population or what?
I'm not clear on the criteria, but I can double check on that.
I, I just want to make sure that, and I hate to do it during your presentation, but this is the only opportunity we get to say,
Right.
Is there any way that we can find the funding to eliminate the waitlist? Because again, I get calls from parents all the time and employees who want their children in your program. So I know how critical it is for them. So if there's any way that we can find the funding to do it, then we should do it. The facilities part, I'm not concerned about, because I think we have some room across the district we can find
Yes.
to create, give you the, the facilities. But the part about the funding for the teachers, I'll wait to hear from Terry later. Thank you.
Yes, because we do get state funding every year. However, normally, when there are expansion grants out there, we do apply, and most of the time, we get them. But we haven't had one this year. So when we do see that there is opportunities for an expansion grant, we're always applying for them.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a quick question. Now, are these the children of our students, our community, or staff, or all three?
Yes, all three.
Okay.
Yes. Next slide, please.
Okay, so our current staff right now, our current staff is, we have sixteen infant staff, twenty-six toddler staff, and a hundred and sixty-seven preschool staff. Again, if we were at full capacity, we would need thirty-two additional, thirty-two infant staff, and we are at capacity with our toddlers, so we do have the twenty-six toddler staff. And we would need two hundred and fifty-two preschool teachers to, uh, to facilitate a full capacity of our preschool.
So that would be additional eighty-five teachers.
Yes.
Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're gonna go over the assessment data. I want you to take a look at part-day and full-day. You're going to notice that full-day is a lot higher than our part-day, and that's because our full-day runs ten and a half hours each day, and our part-day runs three hours in the AM and three hours in the PM. So as you see, for our part-day program, thirty-three percent of our children are at or above the California Learning Foundation in language and literacy, and twenty percent of our children, twenty-six percent of our children are at or above the Learning Foundations in math. Now for our full-day preschool, you'll see fifty-four percent of our children are at or above the California Learning Foundations for math, and for infant toddler, fifty-one percent are at or above the California Learning Foundations for language and literacy. Now, just to give you guys some clarification, the California Learning Foundations are basically standards that were developed um, by California Department of Education. Next slide, please. Oh, and I have to apologize, because the last slide was for fall, and we don't have our spring in yet. So as soon as we get that, I will share them with you. Now, what you see now is educational software for guided instruction data, and this is spring. So for this, ninety percent of our children know their colors. Twenty-one percent of our children can count up to a hundred. Eighty-one percent know their shapes. Sixty-four, I should have brought my glasses, sixty-four demonstrate proficiency in phonological awareness. Forty-seven recognizes uppercase letters, and forty-two recognizes lowercase letters. And fifty-eight percent of our children demonstrate understanding and pattern. Now, this data pertains to our children from three to five years old. Next slide, please.
So this is what's happening in our preschool classrooms. So we do, we are highlighting, uh, four additional activities that we do have in our preschool classrooms. Our VAPA program, which is our, uh, Visual and Performing Arts. We had approximately seventy-five students for our first year, which was last, which was the last fiscal year. Uh, do ballet, hip-hop, uh, flócorico, theater, and it was amazing. We got very good reviews from our parents. We also have a dual immersion program, so ten of our classrooms, of our preschool classrooms, have, uh, fifty-fifty, uh, dual immersion, Spanish, English, um, and those schools are listed. And those schools are listed here on the board here. We also offer inclusion, so our students that have difficulties with speech or autism, they are welcome into our centers. We have sped teachers in our classrooms and our, we have EA3s, Educational Assistant 3s, to support our students in the classroom as well. And we also do PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. So in our classrooms, you, you won't hear a lot of what they can't do, it's more about what they can do. So we're building up children instead of saying, "Stop running, don't do that," no, it's more about what they can do to build them up and to just increase their self-esteem and self-regulation as well in the classrooms. And this year, we're hoping, we have applied for gold status for PBIS, so we're really proud of that, waiting to get the results on that. And not only that, but we submitted a proposal for PBIS to present at the county-wide PBIS. Yeah, California PBIS Conference, and we were accepted. So myself and our PBIS coach, Rosanna Benbo, will be presenting at this conference and talking to whoever decides to join that breakout session on how we got started with PBIS and how we've moved from bronze to gold within the last, what, 10 years? Within the last 10 years. So that's it for us tonight, thank you again, if you have any questions or comments, we'd love to hear.
On your test results, are these results after the students have been with you for a certain period of time? Or are these the results when they come to you, what are they?
Yes, so they're assessed twice a year in this, in the fall, and they're also in the spring. So in October, they get assessed, and they also get assessed again in March. So those are, so unfortunately, I don't have the DRDP spring assessments, but I will get that to you.
But just so, the test mean more to me, I'm assuming the test is saying that when the students came to us, they were not at this level?
No, they were not.
So do we have any test results that show the level they were at when they came to us?
No, we do not, we test, so what we do for our DRDP assessments is we test 60 days from the time they enrolled, which is considered our fall data, and then six months thereafter, we assess again, which is considered our spring data.
So are those results here?
Yes, for the DRDP, you only have the fall, you don't have the spring yet. But I'm going to, as soon as we get them, I'll give them, I'll give you the spring, so you can see the difference.
Yeah, just so you're clear for me, I like to see, here's a set of students, this was their 60 days test results, and then those same students, this is their six months test results.
Yes, we can definitely get that for you.
That'll show the, the growth and importance of the program. I really think that the, and program is immensely important, and to me, I have parents that are, especially if they're parents and students in our district, or where there will be students in our district. So to me, it's a lost opportunity if they're on a waiting list and they can't get into our program. So I asked the superintendent to find out what the cost per year is for the students, and then we'll do the same thing. I would like to hear, make sure we're looking to ensure that there's nothing we can do to impact those waiting lists, even if it's just 10 more kids, that's a big deal, because every one of those kids that we get in the program, we're going to have more success with. Thank you.
Is that it? Oh, go ahead.
Good. Thank you for your presentation, I had a few questions. So I understand from what you presented in terms of the waitlist, that it's, there's a financial piece of it. But I'm just wondering, has there been any consideration where the programs are part-time to possibly tap into our CTA program where there are students who are working on their teaching credentials, or, I don't know, just an opportunity space to see if we can probably start securing some of the teachers that can maybe work with the toddlers or be there to do some type of internship if we're not already doing that already. And that way, we can at least start seeing an increase in the staffing, if, just the consideration, have we thought about that or done something like that?
We have not, we would have to look to see what credential they have. So for our instructional aides and rec aides, they don't need a credential, but for our teaching staff, they do. So they need a child development credential for that, and they need a certain amount, for our aides, they need a certain amount of units. So, but that's something, that's a great idea, something we can look into and see if they have those units.
Okay, thank you, because I, we have a pathway at a royal, right, for education?
Yes, and we actually have some interns at a royal, student interns.
Yeah, there's student interns that would not necessarily help us with the ratio of enrollment, because they are not cleared by DOJ, all of that stuff.
Right, I get it, but that's current state, I'm also thinking about the succession. So once they have achieved the certifications necessary, is that something we could consider related to once they graduated? And then that's an opportunity space from a career development perspective?
Yes, so what we have done, and I'm sorry, Dr. Kelly, what we have done is there is a pathway for us to be able to get more preschool teachers, and that's through the classified route. So because we have, and we actually have lots of stories of our classified tutors and rec aides who actually have become teachers in the program, in fact, I think we had like three of them this year.
But I go back to my question, are we exploring that as an option though, are we looking at?
It is, it's a current, it's, it's not necessarily an option, it's something that we are currently doing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my other one was in reference to going back to the assessment data, I'm, what's the baseline? You gave the percentages, but what are we comparing this to, is there?
So the California Department of Ed created standards, which are called California Learning Foundations. And that's where they say developmentally, this is where children should be. And when we complete the DRDP, we, it's completely observational assessments. So it's what we actually see the children do. And so once we input that in the DRDP developmentally profile, that is how we get the percentages. So there is a baseline in the California Learning Foundations, but it's all developmental.
So also to answer your question, so the assessment data that's on page seven is probably equivalent to the pre. So this is for when students are coming in 60-day mark. The post, after they've been there for six months, we don't have that information as of yet, we'll report that in the Friday update.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and Ms. Medina?
Yes, thank you so much for bringing this presentation, it's been a while since we haven't received this and, and just seen, so what I, what I see and how I take this, is this is also an opportunity to help our families out of poverty. Why? Because, you know, families, childcare is so expensive, and not that this would be childcare, this is enrichment. But it is so expensive and many families, either they go to work, or, you know, it's, it's a struggle. And many other, you know, low-cost opportunities are so filled with, there's a long waiting list that I think here in San Bernardino, if we're going to not only help our students achieve higher by the time they get into kindergarten in so forth grades, but it's also going to help our residents here in San Bernardino where they're able to work and not having to worry where their children's are at. So I, I do agree with Mr. Tillman and Ms. Alexander in really looking at how we can increase and closing that waitlist as much as we can, but I know that it also goes through budget, but that would be something that I would definitely want to see us moving towards. But thank you so much for the presentation, the work that you're doing.
Superintendent Arroyo.
All the comments from the board, okay, great. Well, I, I want to say that we have two, three very humble leaders, so if I, if I can add to the presentation a little bit, I want to add to it because they're very humble leaders. So let me first address adult ed. As you heard, San Bernardino is one of five districts that, that serves as part of the consortium, and I can tell you, because I look at the data, our completion succession outcome rates in the consortium are the highest. And I know Mr. Pedro Sahia, every year, he is the one school district that uses 99.9% of his funding every year. So I know he's a very conscientious leader and is working hard. But what I want to share about our adult ed program that was really a highlight, as I attended the various ceremonies, whether it was LVN, whether it was citizenship, whether it was a barber shop, whether it was, whatever the, the common theme there from the speakers was, they felt a sense of belonging, that there was a safe space to be at, to be successful, and more importantly, customer service. Those two things are so important in that world because there are people who are coming in and out. There's a lot of insecurity in their own lives. And so I know firsthand, I've seen that our adult ed, they're about people first, process second. And, and I'm very proud of the fact that, you know, our completion rates of the different programs are very high. I know there is a will, and I appreciate the board, and that's what I love about this board is, you know, we always want to make sure we can get everybody in there, right? And so I appreciate that you guys give us that challenge. And those funds are limited from the state and federal government, and so I just wanted you to know that our, our program does spend every single dollar, but I appreciate the challenge to continue to try to find more places. I know Mr. Tillman was asking me, "How many FTEs are there in the adult ed?" I couldn't give him the number, but I know the answer is, there's a lot of people, because when I go through there, we walk through the two stories, through all the hidden dungeons of the Sages Building, and there's classrooms in there, there's a lot of people working there. And it wasn't mentioned, but there's AM and PM sessions for classes. So that operation, the lights are on from, I think, 7:30 in the morning to 10 o'clock at night. So I would really love to invite the board someday individually or as a group, if you want. It's probably been a while that we've seen adult ed in its newest form. I know, we were talking about how it was cut many years ago during the budget cut, so I think to be there would be a different experience to even just see the, the presentation. So I just, hats off to our adult ed. And then our preschool program, these are two very soft-spoken people, but they do great work. I know Dr. Kelly, my, my challenge to her a year ago was, if we're going to focus on third grade reading proficiency and third, you know, fifth grade math complexity, we have to capture the kids when they're two, three, four years old, because the research tells us that their brains are at their biggest capacity in terms of sponges. So one of the challenges that I gave our team was, I need our early literacy and early numeracy program at the preschools to be a little more rigorous. And so what wasn't shared here today is on the ESGI data that was shared. When you compare the results of this year's full-time, full-day preschool kids to last year's, now they're apples and oranges, because they may be different kids, but you can see that the data, and we'll show you that, the data has increased. So which tells me that the rigor of the program in the preschool, in the academic, is going up, why is that important? So our kids come into kindergarten who already know their alphabets, they already know certain sight words, they already know numbers. I'll challenge her probably in another year or two and say, "Can we get the kids to add and subtract before they leave preschool?" So they're entering TK or kindergarten now with that advanced level, which if you parlay that up to first grade, second grade, then we're starting to develop kids who are much more advanced, so they've done a staying job. Now, the other thing that wasn't mentioned today, because I know we were trying to be quick and concise, but preschool programs have very structured limitations on how much space there is in the classroom, what has to be available in terms of restrooms, the way we clean them every day, it's very different than a regular classroom. So even though we may have open spaces, open classrooms across the district, they may not necessarily meet the minimum criteria that we would need to provide to get the permit to have it licensed as a preschool. So I think our challenge in terms of looking for more funds would not only be just for the people and the chairs, but also to maybe do some modifications to those classrooms, because there's some requirements for that. I know that we have been working actively with San Marino Valley College, because they do have, and they're trying to build that robust program for the preschool permit, that's something that I talk to Dr. Contreras all about, all the time when I speak with him, about how can we create a faster pathway of, you know, how can we be the first dibs on those preschool teachers so that when we have positions open, we're ready to go? Then the last piece I want to say before I thank everybody for their presentation, was the other challenge that I provided, Dr. Kelly, was our tip policy talks about the importance of our African-American students being in our preschool program, so they have that early chance, as Mr. Tillman was talking about, that, that could be life-changing. And I know we have approximately 9% to 10% African-American students in a given year. One of the challenges that I gave her is, can we get to 20% of the seats being filled by African-American students? And I know these, this year, we've gone between 13% and 15%. So I appreciate the effort that our team has done to try to meet that part of the tip policy as well. So I wanted the board to know that, you know, all of the objectives also are folded into what we do day-to-day for our adult ed and our preschool, which is in our multi-year vision. So I just want to thank our leaders there, they do tremendous work. Would love to have the board come out to look at our preschool programs, it's fascinating. She knows I went to the one all red center, I wanted to go play in that little upstairs room, that was, that looked like a lot of fun up there. But there's some good work going on, so thank you everybody for your reporting, board, thank you for your questions.
Yes, thank you.
It's okay, I wanted to add something real quick. I want to thank the board for the vision that you guys have had and the support that you have for our preschool program, and invite you to come to our brand-new building, and maybe Maori, so you can talk a little about that, but it's awesome. And it's a, it's a brand-new, it's the Francis Grice Cardinal Childcare Center, or Child Development Center. Beautiful classrooms, very natural, beautiful facilities, you got to come and see it. And it will service kids from birth all the way up to five, including a special education classroom, one that has been displaced from Harman. But it is, it is state-of-the-art, and I'm so proud of it, you guys need to come and see it.
Dress.
And, yeah.
It's in the parking lot of San Marino High School Literate.
And then just another little quick fun fact, so I'm a graduate of our preschool program, class of 1974. And so just, it's, it's a beautiful place, I know Mrs. Grande has been out there to help us with their very first field trip. It is a beautiful experience, and it is something that is happening in this district that we are going above and beyond to be able to help. And the partnership that they have created between the adult school and the preschool program, we actually are offering the preschool, I mean, the childcare program at the adult school so that people before who were going in could only get childcare for the hours that they were at adult school. Now they can, their child can be cared for, so they can go to school and have a job and not worry about their child. So beautiful partnership there, they are extremely humble, but I am so proud of the work that they do, and we're hustling, I mean, we really are hustling to make sure the enrollment is up. And yeah, they're just wonderful ambassadors, but it's truly a privilege to work with people who are so passionate about the work that they do.
Good job, thank you. Thank you once again for coming tonight, it's awesome, all right.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Dr. Rodriguez, and if there's a way that there can be, you know, maybe two or three that we can try to head down and see Francis Grice, I'm so excited, I know she would definitely be proud of the work that we're doing here and naming that facility after her. But I do want to mention, you know, the adult school, I don't know, has it been remodeled recently? Because the reason why I'm saying is that many years ago, I don't know, it's been a while since I haven't gone, it, it, it wasn't, it needs, you know, we want to bring pride to the campus, right? So I don't know, has it been recently remodeled, or can we look at maybe through funding, or maybe the bond, something that will actually bring pride to the adult school, or I mean, sorry, to the ICEC? And, and, you know, making a facility of world-class here in San Bernardino for adults.
I don't, I don't know when it was last modernized, I know it's a very old building, it's a very tired building, but our M&amp;O crew has done an excellent job of making it fresh and keeping it fresh, and it looks nice. I mean, when you walk through the building, it looks nice. Would it be great to have a brand-new building? Yes, it would be nice. But I think we'd be very proud at the moment when you walk through. But I think we'd be very proud at the moment when you walk through the hallways. It's clean, it's pleasant, it's bright. These guys have done a great job with furniture and, so it's not, I remember how it used to be twenty-five years ago, so it's not dead anymore, but I don't know how recent.
Well, it's maybe about five years ago, six years ago, so I don't know if maybe there was some work done.
I believe the parking lot would change a lot too, that we could redo the pavement, the parking.
So the parking lot has been resurfaced and in the green room is now the blue room because they changed the carpet there. But yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. But still, that might be an option where we want to bring pride, you know, we're getting, we're building new facilities.
Like a mural or something?
Yeah, no, or no, just redoing the, maybe building it from the top, from the bottom up again. And that would be something, that would be an idea for potential bond.
Yes, he's over there nodding his head.
Yes.
All right, are you done? Thank you, okay, moving on, thank you very much. Let's go ahead. Moving on to six point one, six point O board discussion, six point one. Student Board Member Compensation. Mr. Tillman originally brought this forward at a previous meeting for consensus to discuss. Mr. Tillman, would you like to start?
I guess the first question is, did AB four seventeen pass?
The word is yes.
Yes, and actually, my, my partner right here, it's been chaptered.
Chaptered?
Chaptered, is part of the ed code.
Okay.
Are there, in AB four seventeen, are there guidelines that dictate how much the student board members should receive in the partial monthly compensation?
I thought I saw it look like ours, no, yes?
Is that the discretion of the board? You can do elective credits, you can do, you can do compensation, but that is a discretion decision by the board.
I'm reading where it says, for county boards of education and school district governing boards, which we are, the board would authorize a member to also receive partial monthly compensation as described above and would authorize an absent people. The second page. So yes, I, I would like for us to consider giving compensation to the school board members, the student board members. But I think if we do it, then we're going to have to have a different process in terms of allowing all qualified students to apply. I don't, if, if we start paying student board members, then there'll be a concern that why didn't I have a chance to apply? So I don't think the process we use right now would, would work. I think it'd be better because you might get, if the students start getting, I don't know if it's the same, it's happened to us, or two hundred dollars a meeting, then they're probably a lot more interested in becoming a student board member.
Currently, the process for the election of a student board member comes from a committee of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, which has representatives of the different high schools and also middle schools. Now, there has been some discussion and we've revamped where it used to be the principal picked the candidates. And now we have it open where any student in the eleventh grade, we actually are creating a video so that we can play that at all eleventh grade, tenth and eleventh grade social studies classes to let them be aware of becoming a student board member and that they can apply because we do want it to be more representative of the school populations than just somebody who gets, you know, cherry-picked by the principal.
Very important, yeah. So I guess, we have, have we, have we or have we not selected the student board members for upcoming year?
Yes, we have, they have been elected by their peers in SLAC.
I just, I don't know.
All right, Ms. Medina, go ahead.
So I know for myself, I, I do believe, and I was really excited when this came out for our students to be compensated because they are, you know, you know, giving their, they're part of the board. And I think these are great opportunities for them to also, it's not free intern, it's something that they're also getting compensated for. My only concern is that, well, not concern, it would be now what would that election process look like? You know, is, is, you know, SLAC, like for instance, they would make the same as us, basically. And I just wanted to clarify too. When I got elected back in two thousand thirteen, I was making, we were making seven fifty. So in the last twelve years, we've only increased one fifty-one. So I'm wondering, would this maybe be an opportunity for us to kind of increase now board members, school board members? We're maxed out? Okay.
Okay.
So then I guess what I'm trying to say is that, so our position, since we're about the same, right? You know, we go through a whole rigorous process of being elected and being part of a board. I, I honestly don't think SLAC would be enough. But I do, I do believe they should be compensated. I just don't think that the election process through SLAC would be enough.
So the students do participate in SLAC. The expectation is that they're in it for two years at least. There is an application process that we go through, that they have to submit, that they are wanting. We have to have parent buy-in, you know, their commitment. There is a standard or criteria for grades and conduct. So we're not, we're not just getting any student, so there needs to be that, that threshold. In addition to that though is, you know, they do give speeches to the membership body of SLAC. We can look at expanding that as we're growing the program. Because again, we're, this is very different than the program that we had before the pandemic. This is one that is more representative, we actually have more student board members than we used to have in the past. The other difference is that these student board members do not come to every board meeting. There is a rotation that they encounter. There's also a community service component that they have to do at least ten hours a month of community service that's outside of the time that they spend on, on the board. So it, it's, it's not just showing up, we do have trainings for them. We do meet with them twice a month, one through SLAC and one individual. They do go to agenda reviews, they do participate in CSBA, whatever we can do to beef up their skills, they do. And actually, we do have a student here today who is, who came just to kind of observe. He didn't have to be here, but he just wanted to kind of learn and, and see what that role would be for him.
It'd be interesting to also hear from our student board members and seeing what their perspective on this.
Yes.
I just know that, you know, for, you know, for those that run for office in these positions, it is hard work. And not only is it hard work, we as board members, yeah, we're getting paid for two board meetings, but many of us are doing multiple meetings and, and, you know, traveling and going to different sites and it's, 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 could be considered, you know, a lot of work. And so, and of course, we do still go to those conferences. What I'm trying to refer is, you know, their election process to be equitable would need to look, not to the level of us being, because we're, we're now at large, that's about two hundred thousand voters. It's, it's, it's a lot. So, and then students are selected by SLAC, it would, I'm not saying that that wouldn't be credible. It's just maybe opening it up to maybe the whole district for the students. All high school students will need to submit a vote, maybe that's a different process. And, and of course, qualifying, making sure everybody qualifies and then having an election like that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Felicia, and then Dr. What?
I like, I like that idea of showing a video in all the classrooms. Is that something that we will be doing come this school year, Dr. Rodriguez?
I mean, school year, yes.
I think that's great because then it opens up the opportunity space for all students. Is there a consideration for tenth grade? I know you mentioned eleventh and twelfth, and the only reason why I'm saying tenth is because it at least gives them two years before they start preparing to go to college.
Yes, it would be probably tenth and eleventh, not twelfth, because at that time, they wouldn't be able to serve a full term.
Okay. And then is it possible just for all of us to see the parameters around the selection process for student board members?
Absolutely, we can do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The current process, yes. Because I think maybe if we see that, maybe some of the questions that are coming, that are being raised, we'll be able to get answers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. What?
Thank you, ma'am vice president. You know, a lot of the concerns I would, I have have already been brought up by some of my colleagues. You know, we start paying our students, I think, you know, money changes the dynamic of everything. Could be the motivation, desire to be a board member. I remember when I ran for the board, you know, ten years ago, I didn't even know we were compensated, number one, to be honest with you. I didn't know we got any kind of money. And as you said, Mr. Zosmedino, it doesn't even pay for the gas, you know, when we're running around driving to all these events. So I know none of us do it for the money, that's for sure. Because it just, it doesn't pay nowhere near what we do in regards to our efforts, our participation in supporting our city. You know, I would want students just like us to be in it for the right reasons, to want to represent the student body, to be a voice for our community, the best voice, I'll say that, because they know what they need more than us. You know, when I listen to our student board members, I just get impressed all the time going, wow, I had no idea, right? And I know when I ask my own children, they're not as young anymore, but they teach me all the time. So their, their voice and their representation is critical to our success, number one. I'm really all for credits awarded, I, I think that is great. Compensation, you know, if we do compensate them, yeah, per meeting. I, I don't think it should be anything like what we get because, like you said, Ms. Medina, Zosmedino, we put in a lot of work, a lot of money, a lot of effort. And it shouldn't be about the money. It should be about the representation of being a school board member and being a part of this city and this district. But I absolutely agree on credit awarded and I would agree on compensation, it's just what amount and what is, I think, a reasonable amount too. Maybe we can do a study, comparative analysis at other districts if they do it. If they don't, I would love us to lead the way, as we have so many times doing this. I know we led the way with having student board members. And I think we could lead the way again on how we compensate our students as well, thank you.
Mr. Tillman? Oh, Michael, Michael Linden, sir. Yes, it was Danny and Michael.
No, I, I think the, the, the big deal is, because you said they're not just any student, but they should be just any student. I, I really do believe, because we're just any people. And all, all it takes to run for school board is you have to be eighteen and a US citizen. And it should be the same thing for the, and that's the part I'm getting at. If, if we're going to do a compensation, then we really should ensure that all students have the opportunity to run. And someone that run and win should be people that, the people in SLAC be like, wow, how did they even get in there? That's the kind of board members that should have the opportunity to win. So it shouldn't be in a, any type of, you know, a formal system. It should just be at large within the school system. And I think we have somebody from every school right now?
We have, we have representatives from each of the high schools. When I said about it's not just any student, it is open to anybody. But because of the time commitment that they, because sometimes they have to come out of school, we're not going to jeopardize a student's opportunity to graduate because they're handling business of a school board member. So they need to be in good academic standing.
But what's the business of a school board member though?
Sometimes we, they get pulled out for SLAC meetings, they might get pulled out to go to other activities.
But you're making my point though. The, doesn't have, this has, doesn't have to be SLAC. They have to go to a board meeting, that's this one. And they get elected to represent and they get to manage how they do it. I think, I think we should blow up the whole SLAC thing and just say, you run, the meetings are whatever the days, you guys rotate. If we decide the compensation is two hundred dollars a meeting or a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting, you get compensation for the meetings you attend. And we will put the schedule together. But I really do believe that any student should be eligible. And I say that because when I was in high school, I had an opinion, but I was never looked at like, hey, nobody would ever say, hey Danny, you should, you should be a student school board member. It would have never happened, no. But that's not to say that if I saw a flyer and a video that said you could be a representative of your school and get paid two hundred dollars a month, I would turn real serious and start giving some good speeches to my fellow students. They would see a side of me they had never seen. And I really think all students should be eligible to apply for it.
And that's why we opened it up so that it's not just a principal selecting the kids. Any student can be part of and say that they want to be active on the Student Leadership Committee that we have. But I'll take that into consideration.
I, I really think the board should say that we're going to run, and you guys could do it on your own calendar, but this should be a process developed and we can go with this year's seated student, I'm fine with that. But for the next group, it really should be an open process. You, wherever the video is that we know, I know when I used to be in high school, first period was home school. So maybe announce what goes out in the first period. Everybody's eligible to become a run for student school board members. You go here to put your name in, the Lex is going to be X amount a day and we'll see who wins.
Michael, Dr., Mr. Michael? Yes.
I echo a lot of what everyone is saying here. I understand there being some sort of criteria or minimum GPA, whatever, whatever that may be. But I think it's important, it's democracy, right, so that they're elected. You know, I take a lot of pride that I was elected student body president when I was in high school many, many moons ago. And there's sometimes there's criteria that you eliminate people and, and in a democracy and elected, sometimes you get the person you want, sometimes you don't. But it's still a democracy and that's what it is. So I think there should be some criteria, of course, right? We're not, if you're not doing well, if you're not focusing in school, then this is a privilege still. But again, I echo what everyone else is saying here.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still not quite sure, do we support the money, yes or no? I'm not really sure, we're still discussing.
I say.
Okay.
I say yes, and I would suggest two hundred dollars.
I also say yes, but I do want to hear back from our student board members. And I know we have one here, so I don't know if they would like to submit a comments request for this item. But at the end of the day, before we make any decisions, I think we should have our student board members speak on it, especially the ones that have been on before. Is there, no, they're all new?
This group is all new.
All new.
All new.
Okay, so, but my, what I wanted to share was a couple of things. One is that the, the money part of even like school board member, it was never anywhere. It, it, you know, I really, it's not really open, it's not in anywhere. When I decided to be a school board member, I didn't do it. I didn't believe there was any money, I didn't, I didn't understand all of that. So that was a nice surprise after I was elected. When, in ninety-five, nine, two thousand, I was elected student body president at Crafton Hills because I wanted to bring karaoke and pickle jar sales, I want to sell pickles on campus, you know? So I, I did, I won by one vote. When I went to Cal State San Bernardino, I thought, I'm going to run for president here, right? I would run for vice president and then president. I didn't learn until after the election, I was compensated ten thousand dollars a year. Yes, it, it goes on a percentage like we do here, how many children are enrolled, so much per ten thousand. So we had, we had, at that year, we had about ten thousand students, okay? So fast forward to today when there's twenty-some thousand, the student body president there and vice president and treasurer are getting twenty thousand dollars a year. Okay, now you're going to go to UC, believe it or not, all those big colleges, they get, how many students do they have? They get fifty thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year. The student body, that's why you get really up-and-coming politicians, you know? So, so I'm just saying, it's up to them to do the due diligence and find out if they're going to get paid or not. I, I like the idea of paying them something. And then when they get them, gone on board, they're going to say, wow, surprise! And they go, wow, all of this and you get a little money too. But yeah, I support it, not, not to the full as much as ours, you know, we do ten times more work than anyone else. But anyway, there, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. Who's next? Ms. Felicia.
Well, I wanted to clarify because there's two items on here. It's for financial compensation and of course, credit. So I'm not sure, has there been a motion or are we still in discussion?
Discussion.
Okay. I would like to motion that we agree to both, so elective course credit as well as a monthly financial compensation.
Was there a second? Okay, so, all right, still Superintendent. Okay, go ahead.
So for discussion, that's the area I would like to focus on and suggest.
All right. So where are we? What? Oh.
Yeah, and just so you know the history of the stipend in the district, when I first got elected to board, board members got $50 a board meeting, and it had been that way for a long time. And then I looked into it and found you could get up to $350. And we were in the newspaper, because we, I moved to increase the compensation to, from $50 to $350, and they said, the board increases their pay by 800%. It was headlines. But as you know, you only can increase it by, now it's 5% a year, and if you miss a year, then you can't go back. So because the number is so small, the numbers don't really get big. But we also get full medical benefits, and I will admit, when I ran for office, I was very aware of that, and it was a motivating factor, getting free medical was a big deal. So it was, you know, it's a job, so I don't have a problem saying that, you know, I'm trying to get a job to get paid, and even, and even the medical benefit that we get here are substantial. And I don't take it for granted, and there's a lot of people that would, can only dream about the type of level of medical benefits that we get here on the board. So that's not something that I think should be a secret, I think it should be used as a tool, as you said, Mary Ellen, to motivate folks to want to assume the positions also. There is something there. And I really think that's part of the reason why I'm excited about the coursework and the pay. But I will say this, I kind of take, I have a concern about Ms. Medina's approach, because if I'm an incoming board member, and I got a chance to get paid, I'm thinking, I know he's probably not like me, but I'm thinking, what are we waiting for? Give me my money. So unless you're going to make it where, if you're going to give them the money, that you're going to make it retroactive. But I really think we shouldn't act as though if we're going to give people payment, that it's not something that we should do right away. We're getting paid, so I think we should at least discuss the amounts. I know, Ms. Alexander, you didn't mention an amount, I threw out $200, and I only say that because I agree, the student board members, they don't vote on certain things, they're not involved in some of the legal stuff that we do in closed session, and don't have some of the responsibilities that we have to have as elected board members. So I would just throw out the $200 number per meeting. And I think you guys only have a meet, what, is it once a month, or once? How does it rotate right now?
So... So there's eight.
How often do they come to the meeting?
They cycle through, probably like through, every six weeks.
Every six weeks?
Every six weeks.
So we'll know when they're up? So how many meetings are they exposed to?
Eight meetings total.
Each person?
Each person.
Okay. So that's what they would get, the $200 per meeting. All right, thank you.
All right, and who's next? Ms. Felicia?
Problem. I know you mentioned I didn't give a number, but I think that we just need to do our research. I'm not in disagreement with the 200, to be honest with you, but I think it's important to do the research, but most importantly for us to see the parameters of the selection process. And then the other area that I want us to also highlight, I believe it wasn't this year, but the year before, we might have had a few student board members that were also working with the city, and they were also working with the city councils. So just something to consider, if we're going to compensate them, that, I'm not trying to limit their options in terms of opportunity space, but I think it's something that we should consider, that, you know, if you're going to be on the board, and this is what you will be selected for, to open up the opportunity space for all students, and that the selection process isn't limited, because they're seeing the same talent. And that's just one area that I think we should address, just to make sure that the student board members are either on the student board, or they're working for the city, or they're a part of the city governance.
That's for next year, right? We already have?
Yes, yes.
So the way I see it is, the selection process is for the next cohort. We have our student board members now, so the only discussion is, are we going to give them compensation, and the amount, and the credit? Because there, we have a group that's selected already, so the new process is not going to affect them anyway.
Right. But Mr. Tillman, if you set a policy, though, the policy would stick, it doesn't just apply for the current board members, we would be setting policy for the board member selection process. So those are two different things.
Okay, excuse me, I have to be mindful, Mr. Santos has been waiting patiently, thank you. Go ahead. Go. Go.
No, I just, everything everyone is saying is the same thing I want to say, you're saying eloquently. To me, again, the most important thing is the diversity of that, and diversity in every meaning of that, GPA, schools, representation, all of those things. Because usually, you'll get a lot of the students that wonderfully want to go to the top schools, that are the top students, which they deserve, right? They're working really, really hard, but I just want to be, and again, I think sometimes the, those are the kids that the principals know, right? Or that, so making sure that we make it available to all of our students, or they're representative of all of our students, because in any school, any of our schools, there's a diversity of students, whether they're athletes, whether they're in an IB program, or in a CTE program, so they're that kind of diversity. So they have different views within the same school. So that's just what's important to me, so that selection process and that voting is important.
All right, that sounds good. And yes, please Superintendent Oregano?
Yeah, thank you. I'm super excited at the energy of this conversation, and I really do appreciate it. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear with the direction that I'm hearing today, and then if perhaps I can make a few suggestions. So as was noted, we already have student board members that are selected for this year. And it sounds like there's energy to come up with an amount, and I know an amount has already been thrown out. So my suggestion would be that we would have a policy, a current policy, that basically says, students were selected already for this school year, and for the '25, '26 school year, the amount of student compensation will be XYZ, and/or credits based on the Carnegie Unit requirements, right? That doesn't prohibit us from exploring these next couple of months, and also seeing what other school districts are putting out there, and seeing kind of where the medium starts to happen amongst larger districts, right? I mean, obviously, we're not going to compare ourselves to Rialto, Colden, so we want to see what's LA, San Diego, Stockton, some of the bigger districts doing. And then we can bring that back in a couple of months, in terms of what are the amounts. I think it's going to be very important, I appreciate that you guys bring this up, because whenever you start talking about money, then you have the potential of allegations of cronyism, favoritism, or, oh, that's Mauricio's uncle, or son, or that's Danny Tillman's, or that's Felicia's, or that's Scott's, right? There's a dynamic that we have to be sensitive to. So if you could give us, you know, a couple of months to really think this through, and maybe we could provide a suggested process, bring it to the board, so that you guys can say, that sounds good, or it's getting there, and you can continue to give us direction, I think that would be great. So I, as a superintendent, support the idea of giving our kids money. I support the idea of what you guys are all talking about, of this democratic process, because in our multi-year vision, if you recall, one of our statements is, we're trying to teach our students to be civic-minded, right? And why can't that start at the schools? Have them experience what it is to campaign, what it is to give speeches, what it is to vote for somebody, or to understand why am I voting for, you know, you versus you to be my representative on the board and make that money. And we also need to be conscientious of what Danny and I were just talking about, is, you know, many of us, when we were younger, may have not been seen as having the ability to lead, because either we were shy, or we were that kid from that neighborhood, or you were, you know, whatever, fill in the blank. And then these opportunities, I mean, I was laughing with Danny, but it's funny when opportunity opens, how that changes you. Like, I remember Danny driving around with his little flyers that he was promoting, but it was an incentive, right? He suddenly became a leader for his own cause. Look at the student board members we had this year. I mean, we had the young lady from Pacific High School, that guarantee you, four years ago, nobody would have looked at her and said, she's going to be a student board member, and she has aspirations for higher, and look at, look what we created, a leader who has a vision, right? So I do agree that we need to come up with a process, and that the criteria doesn't limit who would be eligible, within reason. I mean, we have to have some criteria, of course, but, so I guess my ask is, is 200 what we're going with? And then, is it okay, permission from the board for us to kind of look the next couple of months, what are other districts doing, and can we provide you some recommendation for a new process?
Do we have a consensus on that? Oh, good, go ahead.
Well, no, that's what Superintendent Oregano said, I think we do a comparative analysis, and then see what those other districts are at, and then that could kind of give us a basis, maybe up or more or less, who knows? After we look at that, I think that's a wise thing to do.
Thank you.
Just clarification, 200 and/or credit? I thought it was 200 and credit. And, yes, and credit.
Yes. Yes, check the internet.
There was a lot of superintendents at CSBA, of course, the board hadn't, but there's this energy out there. So I know people have it in mind as to what they want to do if the law had passed, and now the law's passed, so I'm sure there's numbers out there that I can just call and say, what are you thinking, what are you thinking?
Right, because this is brand-new law, right?
I think it's also important to note, during CSBA, the conference, we led the charge in terms of the number of school boards that came to listen to our student board members, and they were very impressed about our program. So even if we did our analysis and our evaluation of what other board members are doing, or board districts are doing, we're still leading the charge in terms of the number of student board members we have, what we're doing with them, and how we're engaging them.
Thank you, Ms. Medina?
It feels like we're going back and forth. But see, with this, I love the Slack program, and the reason why I was saying, well, this would have to now be a different election process once we get into money, that's why I want to hear from students that are part of it, maybe it's not the deciding factor, but at least to hear their perspective. Because the Slack program has been doing amazing work when it comes to student development, and I know I wouldn't want that program to be, not that it would be dismantled, but, you know, to be less of an importance when it comes to this, if we choose to now go to a different selection process. So that's why I want to hear from students, even if it's through, maybe through public comment, and then having them, or when they come in and speaking on it.
Okay, is that it? Are we done? Thank you, moving on. Two. 7.1 Personnel Report, number one, dated July 1st, 2025, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, determinations.
As presented.
Okay, so be it resolved, the Board of Education approves Personnel Report Number One, dated July 1st, 2025, as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion is seconded by Mr. Tillman. Let's vote.
I apologize, I didn't hear who did the motion.
I did.
And who seconded?
Made by Dr. Tillman and Dr. Wyatt, seconded Danny and Scott. All right. Okay, and the, wait, I don't see.
Ms. Oregano?
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 7.2. Adoption of the Instructional Continuity Plan. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education adopts the Instructional Continuity Plan. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Let's vote. Mr. Santos? Okay, a motion carries. And brings us to 7.3. Approval of the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the SPCUSD and the Public Safety Academy of San Bernardino. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the Public Safety Academy for Special Education Services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Let's vote. Okay, the motion carries, brings us to 7.4. Approval of the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the SPCUSD and Woodward Leadership Academy. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Woodward Leadership Academy for Special Education Services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Let's vote. And the motion carries. Let's see, bring us to 7.6, or 7.5, okay. Approval of the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the SPCUSD and Entrepreneur High School, San Bernardino. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Entrepreneur High School for Special Education Services. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Felicia Alexander, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Let's vote. Motion carries, 7.6. Consideration, okay. Consideration and approval of employment agreement between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. The Brown Act requires that this board make an oral report in open session before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency executive summarizing any recommendation, summarizing any recommendation regarding compensation, including salary and/or fringe benefits. and/or fringe benefits. Consistent with this requirement, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement for Interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Juan M. Lopez. Contract term effective July 1, 2025, through August 31, 2025, unless terminated by the board earlier. Salary of $1,200 per day for each day of service provided, with an amount not to exceed Reimbursement for attendance at meetings and conferences benefiting the district as approved by the board, and reimbursement for mileage incurred in the performance of duties on behalf of the district outside of district boundaries. That concludes the board's report pursuant to Government Code Section 54953(c)(3). I will now open this item for discussion and action. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, so be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the employment contract for the Interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. The motion carries. Moving on to 8.1. Approval of Consent List. Do I have a motion?
Vote.
Second, yes. Second by Mr. Santos, okay. Are there any items to pull? See, none? Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the consent list as presented or amended. The motion carries. Brings us to 9.9, 9.1. San Bernardino Teachers Association Reports.
No report.
9.2. California School Employees Association.
No report.
9.3. Communication Workers of America.
No report.
9.4. San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Bringing us to 10, 10.1. Board members from my left to my right, so beginning with Mr. Santos.
Hopefully, you're enjoying your summer. Nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Wyatt.
No comments, thank you, Madam Vice President.
No comments.
Likewise. Okay, I'm going to tell Avery congratulations for saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm super proud of her, I think she did a great job. And I know that her parents are watching, so I hope she gets to watch it as well. Just one, just area that I wanted to focus on, and I just want to make sure that we're incorporating it as much as we can. I asked the questions quite a bit when we had our Link Learning presentation, and then today. The highlight and the focus on robotics is so important. It should be infused in pretty much everything that we're doing, even if it's highlighted from a point of just exposure. Because robotics is in the medical industry, it's in logistics, it's in engineering, it's everywhere. And I'm not sure if I'm really hearing it as much as I feel we should be hearing about how we're infusing it in our curriculum. I realize that it might take some effort in some spaces, but just, I would like to know, how much of a priority are we seeing technology in that area, and robotics, and how we're infusing it in the classroom?
Okay, Ms. Medina? No, no report. Mr. Tillman? No report. Okay, I just have one quick thing to say. I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Stay safe and your pets indoors, please. And we will be going on a road trip to Arizona this morning, so wish me well, and I hope we're fine and safe, be thinking of you all. And that's it for me. Mr. Oriano?
Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank Vice President Grande for leading our meeting today. Thank you very much. You've done a good job today. I know you're a little nervous, you've done a great job, and I want to thank Dr. Wyatt for being your wingman today. So, team effort, I appreciate that. I want to start today by just thanking everybody who worked in summer school. Our summer school ended this past Monday. We had approximately 9,000 students involved in summer school from high school credit recovery on down. So I just want to thank all of our administrators, principals, support staff, who worked those extra days to help our kids get across the finish line, especially at the high school. Looking forward to the summer graduation in July. I also want to give a shout-out and a deep thank you to all of our custodians and all our M&amp;O crew who are doing the deep cleaning during this timeframe. You know, they really set the tone for the opening of the school year, so I want them to know that we see them, and we value them, and we appreciate all that they're doing. Before I get into my slideshow, just real quick, I wanted to give Board Member Alexander one quick response regarding the robotics. One of the concentrations that we've had these last couple of years is starting at the elementary level. And I know Dr. Clyde has been slowly but surely, little at a time, incorporating more of those STEM labs at the elementary level. So it's definitely on our radar. We're not where we want to be yet, and I know he's being very intentional, because what we don't want to do is just throw robotics and say, do it. So he's been very intentional about where we start, how we do it, pilot different programs, so we will continue to move aggressively, and hopefully get to the point where we can be where it's at a maximum level. But I wanted you to know, we hear you, and we're on it. So, thank you very much, and thank you for keeping that urgency on us, because we need that. So I appreciate that. Wanted just to share a little highlights this past week, and I want to thank Anna Applegate Ed Services and everybody in the AET Department, Michelle Cleveland, they put on our yearly Summer Administrative Leadership Institute for our principals, which is a week-long experience where the principals get a mix of just new learning, but most importantly, they work together collaboratively in their cluster groups to start to finalize their school plans for the upcoming school year. And we had the great pleasure of having Principal Barudi Kafili, who, as you know, is an award-winning principal from New Jersey. What he's best known for is working with those schools that have the biggest obstacles, and having achieve at a high rate, like those neighborhoods where there's a lot of affluence and a lot of, you know, high influence and affluence communities. So Mrs. Applegate had Principal Kafili here, and what I love about him is that the principals saw him as one of them. It wasn't this, just somebody talking at him, it wasn't a research, it was an actual principal doing the work. And so he did a great job. I know the principals want more of him, I know we've made a commitment to bring him back in January. But what I like about him is, his question was, is my school a better school because I lead it? That's the challenge that he had the principals. And we've had in this conversation about, you know, we have to have courage, we have to have the assurance, you have to have the aplomb of being able to lead a school. And so, great presentation. When we bring him back in January, I'd love to invite any of the board members, this guy is fascinating, and he's good for trying to meet our vision. So, thank you so much, Anna, for bringing him, because that was a highlight of the ALI. Next slide. As you knew last week, or last time we met, I had shared with you that I intentionally are heading to the city council from time to time to spread positive news about our school district, but at the same time, I took advantage of what Member Alexander had challenged us on, is can we get the city to start to create that same idea of creating pipelines of employment of our students straight to the city? So, on that day, I was able to hand out the We Are San Bernardino work, where the kids, the city council got to see the poetry and writing of our students. I shared with them the Career Technical Education Course Guide, and I shared with them what we are doing with Samaria County in trying to establish that pipeline. So I shared that with the city council. I was told that as soon as the new city manager starts, I believe he starts in August, that that is something that will be a priority, so I wanted to let the board know that that is in action. You're going to see a little bit what we already have going with Samaria County, but we hope we can do the same with the city of San Bernardino. I want to thank Mayor Tran and the city council, because they are great supporters of the district. And after this presentation, one of the city council asked if we could decorate their chambers with the student artwork that they see in our booklet. So I know Mary Rowland is working very hard to pick out the artwork, frame it, work with the city manager, so that we can line the halls of the chambers of the city council with the students that are from right here in San Bernardino. So, again, appreciate that relationship that we have with the mayor and the city council. Next slide. Terry, I want to give you and Dr. Funches kudos, and I think we should do this every year. They had a softball game, and this picture doesn't do it justice, because there was family, it was packed. And it just brought so much camaraderie, positive spirit to the district in terms of working as a team. So Terry, I just want to say thank you to you, your department, HR and their department. They had this softball game on a Saturday, or Wednesday or Thursday afternoon at Cajon High School, and it just builds that sense of family across the district. And my understanding is business services put a whooping on HR, is that correct?
Right, it was 10 to 6.
Okay.
10 to 6.
Yeah, so we have a rivalry brewing. So, next year, I said we, I think we should invite board members and the superintendent to be either DHs, or umpires, or something, so. But anyway, Terry, thank you for creating that atmosphere. Appreciate that. Next slide. So, this is a video I want to share with you. We, Chelsea Ramirez has been working with Brad Gates, the Executive Director of the Workforce Development Board, in trying to get the Board of Supervisors to really support this idea of them hiring our students who earn CTE certification into the job openings that the county has every month. So what Brad did is he worked with Chelsea to do a video to show to the Board of Supervisors what the district has to offer, and to sell and pitch this idea. So I want to show you the video that Brad Gates, the Executive Director of the Workforce Development Board, put together and showed at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So if you could play that for me, please.
Today, we're touring high school campuses around San Bernardino, meeting with students, teachers, and career pathway programs who are helping prepare the next generation of San Bernardino County's workforce.
Ten years ago, the members of the Board of Education had this vision for the career and technical education pathways to prepare students for college and the workforce.
The Workforce Development Department can help county departments who are interested in providing work experience, learning opportunities to a youth worker by helping to facilitate placement opportunities and paying participant wages.
The goal of the CTE pathways is to prepare our students to industry standards, to be absolutely prepared to enter the workforce the day after high school graduation.
We have a variety of CTE pathways, from business to construction, we have a Digital Media and Arts Academy. We have a lot of different pathways for the students to choose from.
When I was in high school, it very much was, you have this set list of classes that you get the grades in, you'll get your diploma. The CTE programs are much more focused on helping students build those skills for those next steps in their life.
We're really blessed to have a lot of access to multiple modalities. You can come in after school and work with athletes, you can go out onto the field and work with athletes there, too. It's just multiple skills, critical thinking, that we learned in this program that carry out through life.
Where before, we'd have to pay like upwards of 100 grand and such, just to learn those skills, to where now, like in high school, the students are actually leaving with 21st century skills, and like job skills, and things that they could use right away.
I chose this pathway because the dental industry has always been like a passion of mine. I think that it's really helpful, it's really beneficial, because it gives us the hands-on learning that we need. We already know a lot more than what a normal person going into that field would know.
We have eight fully functional dental units, we have a fully functional infection control area.
Classroom spaces that we have created are even a cut above the private sector.
I'm always talking about this beautiful building, so there'll be great candidates for all those positions or future positions that will open in our county.
I like the teachers, I like all the tools, the trucks that we have, technically, everything that we have in this pathway, I love.
The opportunities that we have here, like taking certifications, is just things I would not have had without this academy. And the teacher is a really good motivator. He's been the mentor that I had been hoping to have.
These practical approaches in CTE, and how we approach learning in CTE, has really changed the game for the future workforce. And I can't wait to see what my students do next.
The county's Workforce Development Department and our coordinator, Chelsea Ramirez, have developed this system for our students who earn an internship certificate. Samaria County can hire them directly out of school.
The partnership is great, and the students at San Bernardino City Unified are absolutely spectacular. Our students want to stay local to their families, and being able to partner with San Bernardino County workforce, for our students to compete for San Bernardino County jobs is incredible.
I have a lot of family in San Bernardino County. I plan to stay in San Bernardino County the rest of my life, so I felt like this was the best option for me.
This partnership could potentially change not only the trajectory of our students' lives, but also the trajectory of the city.
We're extremely excited, and that continues on with the vision of having our kids stay right here, in the county of San Bernardino, where the money stays here, the brilliance stays here, and our community starts to rise.
The county is helping to ensure that the next generation has the skills and work experience they need to land the career of their dreams and support our economy.
So I want to thank you, Board, because this is your vision playing out that started many years ago. And I really want to thank Brad Gates and the support he's given this idea. And I want to thank Chelsea publicly, because this is her effort in trying to put this together, where our kids are going to stay right here. And I love those two words, and I remember when Danny said them. It was like my first or second or third board meeting here, he talked about kids right here, doing great things. And now the word "right here" is sticking with our work. So, thank you, Board, and thank you to the county Board of Supervisors. I hope we can make this come to fruition. And last, I want to just formally introduce you. Board approved the contract for Interim Assistant Superintendent of HR, Mr. Juan Lopez. I call him my twin, right? You see the resemblance? But just for the community to know, Juan is someone that I've known for 25 years. He was a retired superintendent from the Valverde Unified School District prior to that. He served as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources in both Valverde and Santa Ana. He has served since his retirement, multiple interim positions, both as a superintendent and in human resources. So he is current, up to date with all the practices and laws, and he's just a good human being, and he's someone that I can trust 100% to help us fill the void until we are able to fill the position. So, want to just give Juan Lopez a big warm welcome, and looking forward to seeing him on Monday at our cabinet meeting. And that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, and now it brings us to Number 11, 11.1, Review of Requests. Katrin?
Good evening. The first request is from Mr. Tillman. He requested that the district explore how to make the option of monthly payments available to students to pay the $5,300 cost of the LBN program at ICEC. The second request is also from Mr. Tillman. He requested that the district find out what can be done to expand the apprenticeship programs at ICEC. The next request is from Mrs. Alexander. She is requesting for the district to consider infusing robotics into the curriculum at ICEC. The next request is from Mr. Tillman and Mrs. Alexander and Ms. Abigail Rosales-Madrid. The next request is from Mr. Tillman and Mrs. Alexander and Ms. Abigail Rosales-Medina, requesting to cost out the expansion of the infant/toddler program and reduce the waiting list. The next request is from Mrs. Rosales-Medina. She is requesting to examine the possibility of remodeling ICEC with funds from a potential bond. The next request is from Mr. Tillman, Mrs. Alexander, and Ms. Abigail Rosales-Medina. They are requesting information on the current process of selecting student board members, develop a policy to address compensation and/or credit. The suggested amount is $200 per meeting by Mr. Tillman, and future selection of student board members. The last request is from Dr. Wyatt. He is requesting a comparison study on compensation from other districts for student board members. And that is it, thank you.
Okay, so that means number 12. Do we need a motion? Okay, do I have a motion seconded? Okay, you don't have to vote, I will mark unanimous. Oh, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.